Well, it's six oh five. Jeremy, let's get started.
We're live.
Okay, welcome to our school committee meeting. I'll just go over the call of meaning to order. Six oh five. I'll just review who's on the meeting. So we have Member Donovan, Member Monroe, Member Green, myself. We have Superintendent Aaronakis, Director of Administration Bob Ross, Jeremy Taylor, Director of Technology. And did I get everybody? Oh, and Attorney Hennius. Okay. Open forum. Comments must be directed to Chairperson of the School Committee, who may limit or terminate discussion. No comment should address personnel, litigation, or negotiations as restricted by open meeting regulations. The School Committee cannot take action or votes on topics introduced that are not reflected on the agenda. And I don't believe we have anybody on from the public. Okay, we can go right to the consent agenda.
Okay. Under consent, we have the approval of the joint meeting that we held on March 2nd and also the regular meeting minutes of March 9th. We have an appointment, coaching appointment for one year only, one season only, and also a a letter requesting an unpaid leave of absence from the coaching position that the first appointment replaces, right? So there's a one-year leave of absence and then one-year replacement. We also have our monthly bills and that covers it for consent.
Okay. Any questions, comments, anybody like anything pulled? Everybody's good? Okay. We can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Donovan's so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Green.
Okay, we'll take our roll call vote. Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. She went got through our roll call vote nice and quick tonight. Okay, so we have correspondence. We have a confidential correspondence in there and we have the Capital Project bond flyer. Any questions, comments on the bond flyer?
It looks fantastic.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Andrea.
Good job, Andrea. Jim, I'm sure Jim and Bob were assets to that also. So excellent job on that.
It's good teamwork. That went to the post office today and it will be in every community member's mailbox by the end of the week.
Great. Good. Okay. There were no monthly committee reports in our packet. Let's see, so we're into new business. We have the Senior High Program of Studies for the 2021-22 school year.
Okay, I know that Stacy Haynes-Maine is on, but I would just say that every year we bring the Program of Studies to the School Committee. There really are not many updates. There are a couple of new courses that were approved at the School Committee level already. Those are inserted into the Program of Studies. Obviously, there is an updated notice to parents and guardians from the principal. I don't think there are any other changes reflected, but Stacy is on and I'll let her speak to that if if I've missed anything. Stacy?
Nope, you're absolutely correct, Jim. There are, there were no changes beyond the new courses that were already approved by the School Committee and Sue's letter.
Okay.
Very good. Any questions, comments on the Program of Studies? Everybody's good? Okay. I mentioned this to Jim. Under Craig's name, he's on the front on the letter and then under the directory. Just because I think that he has an important title, I'd like to see Dean of Students under his name. Is this, is this already printed or is that? If it is, I'm not gonna worry about it, but if it's not, can that get, can that be accomplished?
We don't print it. We just post it online so we could easily make that adjustment.
Oh, good. All right. I think it's just in Sue's in the front and then in the, in the the directory on the second page.
Page three.
Sorry, page three. Yep. Thanks, Terry. Okay, so if we can have a motion to approve the High School 2021-22 Program of Studies?
Donovan's so moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Green seconds. Hold on, I see. I think we have additional people here. Member McFadden's on. Okay. All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
Abstention.
Okay, and I'm an I. Motion carries. Okay. We'll go to item B. We have review and authorized acceptance of the Rhode Island Pre-K Expansion Grant.
Yeah, I, I don't think that Robin Corsi is on, but before we move on to that, I just want to ask Stacy. Stacy, you will take care of that adjustment that the School Committee requested on the Program of Studies online tomorrow?
Yep, I will.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Stacy.
Okay, so we are on to the preschool expansion grant. This is actually a grant that we have applied for two times already in the past. This has to do with state funding and there's an application process. It's really trying to expand high-quality preschool programs in the state by opening up full-day preschool classrooms. That is something that we do not have in our district at the current time. The grant awards over the past couple of years have gone to what they consider higher need communities, but they have opened up the application to broaden the broaden the prospects. So this is not a grant that you haven't seen before. It's just a resubmission. What we're hoping for is state funding so that we can open one section of full-day preschool at Linum and it would be funded almost entirely or entirely from the preschool expansion grant program through the Department of it.
Any questions, comments?
Is the deadline today?
The deadline. Hold on one second.
On the page that starts with eligible applicants. I think it says.
Twenty-third?
Yeah.
Deadline was today. So Robin, I think, scanned it over to Ride today and they know that we are voting on it this evening. So I can always have it pulled if it's not approved, but but we did meet the deadline.
Good, thank you.
And then Jim, what happened? So is it, it's a one-year grant? So if it gets approved moving forward, it becomes a district responsibility?
So the, the funding could be spread out over multiple years. We'd need to look at our enrollment and we think that what would end up happening potentially and most likely is that we would have, because we don't have a lot of kids or any kids on our waiting list at this time, but we would have existing children who instead of, instead of being in the half-day program would move to the full-day program. So the full-day expansion really would only result in a half-day extension. Does that make sense?
Oh, it does. Yep.
Yep. So the funding could be expanded over a couple of years and it's really a half of it that we would need to build in over the course of the next couple of years to make this a long-term commitment. But offering full-day preschool, especially to some of our children with most significant needs, has been a priority of the district for quite some time. We would look at the IDEA CRP, the federal grant application that we do every year as an opportunity to provide some funding for this as well because it is above and beyond what is minimally required by law.
Okay. And then for the children who stay full day, I know the children who have, who have needs don't pay tuition, correct? But the ones who pay tuition, would they pay more tuition or would stay the same? Like, would a half-day be the same as a full-day cost?
So I think the, the full day from my understanding is that this full day is tuition. You know, I'm not.
That's okay. It doesn't have to do with me passing, passing. I just, I just started asking out of curiosity.
The, the tuition, if there is a tuition that's assigned to this, and that's what I need to be clear about. Pension is set by the regulations of the state for the full-day program.
Gotcha.
But it very well could be zero, just so that, you know, since the state is basically funding it, they, I, I think they're asking it to be tuition-free. At least for the period of time that it's funded at the state level.
For the, under the grant, right? Okay. All right. All right, let's see. So we, let's see.
I have another question.
Oh, I apologize, Terry.
That's okay. Um, so we currently don't have a full-day pre-K program.
Right.
So what would a full day look like for a child that age?
So, you know, built into this, into the school day, there's also a nap time. And it's, it's really kind of regulated by the standards, the preschool standards. There is more structured play opportunity. There's lunch that is built in. Obviously, we would not need a kitchen staff over there. It would be one classroom of kids. We've already spoken with our food service provider and they would just run the meals over to Linum for the one classroom. But it, it's really just a lot more structured play, singing time. You know, there's learning obviously embedded in all of those things. But it's, but we have a lot of children that go to the half-day preschool program and then they go to a structured daycare setting.
Right.
So this is really just making sure that there's consistency throughout the child's day, that they're building play and learning into the context of the entire day. But the kids also get lunch and breakfast and everything else associated, recess time, playtime.
And it would be five days a week?
Five days, which is a requirement of this grant.
And our current pre-K program is that five half-days a week?
It's four half-days a week every week, and then there is time on every other Friday for certain children to come in for some extended learning based on their individual needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody's good? I don't see any hands up. Okay. So if we can have a motion to authorize the acceptance of the Rhode Island Pre-K Expansion Grant?
Donovan's so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Green seconds. Okay, we'll take our roll call vote. Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe?
Aye. Did you hear me?
Yep, I hear you now.
Okay.
Thanks. Member McFadden?
Abstention.
Okay, and I'm an I. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, then we have a revision to the 21-22 school calendar.
Okay, I know that this was just approved on February 23rd. There's really one change that I want to highlight. On the old calendar, there was a Professional Development Day listed on September 2nd, which we are now listing as a regular, as a regular school day for grades one through nine and the New Orientation Day for pre-K and kindergarten. So there's a couple of reasons for that. The first is that there was some feedback from the Jewish Alliance regarding the fact that the sixth and seventh is a Jewish holiday, Rosh Hashanah. And there are some grade levels that that would be their first day in school. And they didn't think that it was fair, and I agree that, you know, after the year that we've had, that the first day of school would be missed by a population of our students. So there was some feedback asking school districts to relook at their calendar to see if they could address that need. On top of that, I know that we made mention of this at a previous meeting, but there is a requirement that is legislated for a number of our teachers, including all elementary classroom teachers, special educators, K through 12, reading teachers, K through 12, that they get trained in in literacy. The, the, the the teaching of literacy. And there is a requirement for, it's pretty intensive training and they must demonstrate proficiency. It was legislated. We have a two-year timeframe to make that happen. A lot of school districts are really struggling with how to schedule that. Marie and I, when we were working on this calendar, we met several times and we tried to map out the full-day training days throughout the calendar so that we would not need to pull any of our teachers out of the classroom and require substitutes which don't exist. And it would be awfully hard for us to put substitutes in an entire school, basically, times two, because every classroom teacher at Wildalum and Metcalf needs it. We did finally, we did finally talk with the company who is going to provide the training. We locked in the dates and one of the dates is December 8th. And so on the previous calendar, December 8th was listed as a regular school day. So we basically have changed, switched out December 8th and September 2nd. So September 2nd is now a regular school day. December 8th is a Professional Development Day for teachers. It's one of those statewide days and we would provide distance learning for the students. Again, that's one of the state Professional Development Days that they built in. They built them in on September 1 and 2. They gave us permission to flip it because of the concerns of the Jewish Alliance and because we had a plan to address the literacy training with zero interruption to classroom time and zero need for substitute teachers. And by the way, that training is going to take us two-plus years to do. So all the training that we're providing next year, we've addressed, we're gonna have to do something similar when we develop the calendar for the 22-23 school year.
Okay, very good. Any questions, comments? I don't see any hands. Everybody's good? Okay. Right, so if we can have a motion to approve the revised 2021-22 school calendar?
Donovan's so moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Green seconds. Okay, we'll take our roll call vote. Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe? Member McFadden?
Abstention.
Okay, and I'm an I. Motion carries. Okay. We will go to unfinished business. We have the 2021-22 budget discussion. I guess, anything new on that, Jim?
No, I mean, other than the communication, you know, we had the public forum last night. We sent out the bond flyer to every household in the communities that went to the post office today. So at this point, we really need to wait until the vote of the public on April 12th and then we'll go from there.
Very good. Anybody have any questions, comments on the budget? Everybody's good? Okay, we have the 2021 reentry planning update.
So just one quick update. Well, actually two quick updates. The first round of the Vaccination Clinic that we organized took place last Friday. We had a number of our staff members that that went for their first vaccine. The second vaccine is scheduled for April 9th. And every member of our staff that wishes to be vaccinated will be vaccinated at that point. So that was a really successful event, went very smoothly. And the second thing is we did this week bring back our 12th graders for full in-person learning, five days a week. We had about 50 seniors who opted to come back five days a week. We also had some seniors who already were in five days a week by invitation. Several of the families have, have remained on hybrid and several have remained as full distance, but 50 additional kids started this week, five days. That basically means that we only have approximately 25 additional students in the building on any given day because these are kids that were all on the hybrid model before and it's roughly split between Exeter and West Greenwich. So, you know, the impact is not very significant. Two days down and it's going quite well. Two weeks from Monday, we are inviting back juniors. And then, and, and we will have the same impact. We did survey the families. We, we know what we're expecting. We know where the, what towns the kids come from. We're expecting another additional 25 children per day. And then after vacation, when we know that our staff will be fully vaccinated, we are planning on bringing back the ninth and the 10th graders, but it'll give us some time to see how things go with the 12th graders and the 11th graders pre-vacation. So a lot of our families are super excited about that. And then I don't think I put this in my status report because I might have scheduled it after the fact, but this Thursday evening, Principal Chandler and I will be running a community forum with our senior high school parents, senior parents about prom activities and graduation plans. We are moving forward with planning some kind of a prom experience outdoors. And we are also planning a graduation experience outdoors and it will be live and kids will be able to cross the stage and get their diplomas and parents will be present to be able to see that. We are not going to be able to do that at the Ryan Center, but we are planning for something on campus, hopefully on a beautiful summer day in the football field. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're thinking about at this time. But we are gonna get some feedback from families on Thursday evening when we speak with them.
Very good. Okay, we have a couple of hands up. Member Green?
I just want to say thank you, Jim, because that is music to my ears and I think the staggered start was a great, great idea. And hearing you, you know, planning activities for these kids, just, it's just a positive, positive thing to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Member McFadden?
Like to take a point of order. Jeremy, you on the call?
Yes.
Did you send out the email? I have two emails from you and there seems to be confusion. There's, did you send out three emails or two emails?
I sent two. Superintendent Aaronakis sent one for the executive session later on. If that, maybe that's what's.
I, I saw that. I saw that one and I saw yesterday's meeting. I didn't see the email that you sent me a few minutes ago. You sent that out earlier?
No, I created a new one just for you just a few minutes ago.
I, I, I'm confused because I saw Aaronakis. I, I, excuse me. I saw Aaronakis's executive session and I saw your meeting notification email for Monday's meeting. But where was the meeting, where was the email for the six o'clock one, other than the one that you just sent me a few minutes ago? Shouldn't there have been a third one?
It was sent to 12:15 PM.
Yeah, I received Jeremy's email at 12:15 PM today, Paul, for this meeting.
All right, thanks. I'll look for it. That's it.
Okay. Okay.
Can I, can I just say?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Mr. McFadden, if you received my email, I sent my email by replying all to Jeremy's email. So if you just scroll down on the email that I sent for executive session, all the information for the regular meeting is included. So if you can't find the original, there, there's a copy of it on my, on my email that you said you received.
No, I'll look for it, Jim, but I can't find Jeremy's 12:15 email, which is here. On your email, I see it. I just don't see it in my inbox, so I dialed into the wrong number or the wrong meeting. All right, I'm good. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Jim, on the reentry. That's excellent news and happy to see more of the kids are coming back. Let's see, so we have Capital Project update bond discussion.
So in closing your packet, you just see what you've seen previously, the activity log just kind of gives a chronological order of some of the activity that's been going on. Post the packet being produced on March 18th, there was a Capital Project meeting. It was pretty extensive. It covered, it required three votes. The significant votes were to approve using a mechanical contractor for the to issue the bid to for the HVAC project, seeing as 96% of that project is all mechanical. That means the mechanical contractor would carry, you know, the electric plumbing and carpentry work that goes with it, which is a very small percent. The other alternative was to go with the general contractor, which then would hire a mechanical contractor to do 96% of the work and then the GC would get the other trades in there. So essentially, it because we're on a tight timeline, it shortens the the process and it also will save us money because we're actually cutting out a layer of oversight, if you will, or, or management that we certainly have enough redundancy. So the building committee was in favor of that. The second component of that was mechanical contractors are listed on the mutual purchase agreement on the state website, the MPA. And what that means is that the Department of Administration up at, for the state of Rhode Island, goes out to bid frequently. They issue bids. Vendors respond and on the MPA, the Mutual Purchasing Agreement, there are probably 12 different mechanical contractors that have been given authority for municipality, school districts, et cetera, to use that bid process done by the director, by the by the state in to award based on the MPA. To do our due diligence, we're asking the OPM, which is Downs, to reach out to three to five qualified vendors and to submit an RFP. All of that will be managed by Downs. And again, this is to expedite the process because once we have a good vote on April 12th, we need to hit the ground running in order to start the process of getting, awarding bids, et cetera. So those two items were pretty significant. Go with the mechanical, use the MPA to further expedite the process. The OPM is going to begin to start to take charge of, you know, coordinating the meetings and setting the agendas and in recording the minutes because that's what we hired them to do. So in the beginning, this is kind of typical. The district is kind of taking the lead, but once a project gets up and running. So we'll start to have more of a presence of Downs in the reporting. And the, the third item that we had to approve was the design and development, which brings me to really the nexus of the issue. Ride has the schematic designs. They're reviewing those. Upon approval of those designs, which should be imminent any day now, we're hoping. And Downs is working to keep them moving on that. As soon as the schematic design is approved, we have the design and development in hand and that goes into Ride next. And once they approve that, then we go to the third step, which is the construction documents. In all of this, you know, there is a lot of, of movement on these things and, and the committee's doing a great job. The building committee's doing a great job of of staying on it and approving where we need to. So the goal is on April 13th to have everything in place so that we can convene and award a bid to a contractor and have them start procuring the necessary materials to execute this project. So good stuff, a lot of stuff, and I'll stop there unless there are any questions.
It all sounds excellent. Anybody have any questions or comments? You've come a long way.
You're referring to my brevity chairperson, Panda.
I guess I could be referring to that. I guess I could be referring to that. Over 11 years, that would be an accurate comment, Mr. Ross. Okay, I don't see any hands up. Okay, so we're good. All right. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we have important dates and meetings. So we have April 12th, we have the all-day referendum. And then in the evening, we have 8:30, we have the school meeting, brief meeting for the results. That'll be done virtually. And then Tuesday, April 13th, we have a school committee meeting. And Tuesday, April 27th, we have a school committee meeting.
Claudine, can I just say something about that special meeting at 8:30?
Yep.
So I am actually going to jump on the meeting virtually, but I will be at the high school in the, in the library so that they can drop off the ballots and the vote directly to me because we need to get those hard copies.
Oh, right, yep.
But, but they can, they can state what the results of the vote are over my computer because I'll be on with, with you guys. But I just wanted you all to be aware that I will be on campus at the site so they can do the drop-off.
Excellent.
Okay.
Yep, very good. Okay, let's see. So we do have executive session. Robin, if you can enter into the record, any person to be discussed in executive session has been notified. That'll be great. And then we are going to go into executive sessions if someone can make the motion, if you can read it off your agenda.
Adam Chair, we're also going to be reconvening an open session afterwards, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so I will move to enter executive session in accordance with Rhode Island General Law 42465A1. Personnel, superintendent's evaluation, discussion and action, school committee renewal of the superintendent's contract for a three-year term, July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2024. Discussion and vote, superintendent's 2021 to 2022 salary.
I'll second that.
Member Pacillo seconds. Very good. Okay, so let me take a roll call vote and then after the roll call vote, you're going to exit this meeting and then you're going to pick up Jim's Zoom invite, okay? And Member Henny, if you're staying with us. Okay, so we have Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
Aye.
Member Pacillo?
Aye.
Okay, I think I got everybody. Okay, and I'm an I. Motion carries. Okay, we'll see everybody in a minute.
Thank you.
All right, I think we got everybody. Okay, so we're back in open session. Jeremy, are you all set?
Yes.
We're good, right? Okay. Okay, so first, let's have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Donovan's so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Member Monroe seconds. Okay. Roll call vote, Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
Aye.
Member Pacillo?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm an I. Motion carries. And then Cheryl, just for those, for the minutes, if you can just write no votes taken in executive session.
Got it.
Okay. And then, as Andrew suggested, we could do this in one motion. So if we can have a motion to renew the superintendent's contract for a three-year term, July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2024, with a 202122 salary of $160,886, which is a 3%, reflects a 3% increase and a bonus of $3,000. Andrew, does that sound good?
Yes, the bonus effective also on July 1, 2021. Yep.
Okay, with a bonus of $3,000 effective July 1st, 2021. Okay. Cheryl, do you have the motion? Okay?
Okay.
If not, I'll repeat it.
But, yeah, okay, no, I honestly, I didn't because I thought that we weren't taking any votes in executive, so I didn't think I had to do the motion.
Oh, sorry. We're back in open session, but we don't have Robin anymore.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize.
Sorry.
All right. So yes, no, I need it repeated, please.
Okay. I'm not making the motion. I'm just reading it and then somebody will have to, who will have to move.
Okay.
So, so if, if we can have a motion to renew the superintendent's contract for a three-year term, July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2024.
Yep.
With a 202122 salary of $160,886.
Say the amount again, please. 16686?
No, 16886.
Sorry.
That's okay. Which reflects a 3% increase. You can put, just put that in parentheses.
Yep.
And a bonus of $3,000.
Yep.
Effective July 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Okay. Now it's, I need somebody to move the motion.
Donovan's so moved.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Monroe seconds. Okay, I'll take the roll call vote.
Hold it, hold it. This is usually where there's a discussion, right? Right. So I just wanted to make clear, and Jim's probably on the call, I assume he is, that he's not going to be getting 3% and a 3% bonus every year. It's just 3% for one year and $3,000 for next year, which is, I think that's a lot for this motion, a lot for this motion, but that's the way you guys bundled everything. You did his contract renewal, you did the bonus for next year, and you did the salary increase for this year, all in the same motion. I think it's a lot. I think it's a little confusing and that's my comment. I, I think it would have been better to separate these things at this point because you're, you're talking over two fiscal years and you're talking about his contract renewal, which is completely separate. But that's my comment and you can proceed with your, your move, you know, if you want to move forward on that, go right ahead.
Well, the motion has specific dates in it, so we're good. Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote. Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
No.
Member Pacillo?
No.
And I'm an I. Okay, motion carries. Okay, I think we got everything covered. All right. Jim, are you all set with the, with the meeting? Any comments that you need to make?
No, just, thank you. I appreciate it and I'm happy to stay on board at EWD.
Thank you. We appreciate everything you do. Okay, so if we can have a motion to adjourn?
Donovan's so moved.
Pacillo seconds. We'll take a roll call vote. Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Member Monroe? Member McFadden?
Aye.
Member Pacillo?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Thanks, Andrew.
Night.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.